Good evening and welcome. Would you please stand and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's very nice to have such a turnout tonight and we'll proceed to start the meeting. We resolved the Board of Education approved the agenda for the June 17th, 2019 Regular Board of Education Meeting. Joan, Jeff, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. And the first thing on the agenda, and the most important thing probably on the agenda, is some recognition of our students. Mr. McDonald?
Okay, yes, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Just bear with me, I'm moving a little slow these days. So tonight, this is always the best part of the meeting, although I do like the business part, I do like talking about money and things like that. But this is the fun part, this is the part where we get to recognize our kids and celebrate all their accomplishments. So tonight, I'd like to start with our student athletes who participated this year in our Special Olympics. This year, I've been there, I want to say, I've been here 12 years in the school district now, and I think I've been to Special Olympics about five times. A little more freedom being at the district office now, getting over there, but what an amazing event, just to see the kids participate and give everything they have towards their game, or I'm trying to think, track, field, cross-country, all those things. So with that, why don't, I'm gonna have Mr. Nally, Mr. Nally's our Director for Special Education, I'm gonna have him help me out, and also if I could have Jeff Marié and Kim Deck just help me, and actually, you know what? Here's what I want to do, I'm gonna, we're gonna call up the students, each student I would like to come up, shake hands, and we're gonna give a certificate, and then what I'd like you to do is stay up here, because we can recognize you, and I'd like to take a picture of all the students together. And then I have a few more words I'd like to say at the end. Is Sam Shraven here? All right, Sam, can you come up, please? So I don't know if anybody knows this lovely young lady here, and this is what's hard, you know, this is the hard part of what I have to say, just because this young lady here means the world to me, and without her, none of this stuff would ever happen for us students. She's retiring this year, and she, we could, she will not be, ever be replaced, because they broke the mold when they made her. So, no, no, I told you I was, I had to do this. So I'm gonna have Sam help us tonight, because honestly, everything that we do for every student in this school district is thank you to this lovely lady right here. So can I get a first round applause for Sam Shraven? All right, so that was the hard part, that's why, you know, I'm usually pretty good on my feet, but I have a hard time saying goodbye, and this year's a real tough time for me, because I also have a senior graduating, so this is gonna be a tough week for me. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Nally, you wanna call up the students, and then Sam and I will, you'll help them, okay, and then I'll get them lined up for a picture, so your show, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. It's with my great pleasure and great honor that I get to announce these Special Olympians, first from Baker High School, we have the following students that participated, Faith Austin, Tanner... And I'll read off the whole list of names, Tanner Cass, Andrew Cano, Jared Champagne, Connor Childress, Jack, Danny, Justin D. Francisco, Michael D. Gregorio, Melanie Hamilton, Jessica Mayer, Edward Monahan, Belinda Swain, and Adam Wheeler. We'll just keep calling them up?
Yep.
Okay, and next we have from Derkey Junior High School, the following students, Robert Blake, Paul Claver Jr., Alec Crandall, Emily Crandall, Aiden Fitzgerald, Connor Hayes, Stavros Ionidis, Marshall Jones, Quinton Miller, Noah Porter, Anthony Rosario, Isis Rouser, Addison Sam Chisholm, Amaya Segroy, Mia Chouex, Kelsey Tylinda, Emily Whitley, and Emily Wink. Come on up. Next, from Ray Middle School, please come up, Beth, Ben Carver, Andrew Dyer, Andrew Enright, Nate Hahn, Tyler Hahn, Amelia Howard, Justin Lewis, Kevin Lockwood, Annika Parish, Joseph Ponto, Mary Ellen Reck, Deschel, and Ashley Thompson. Come up. Okay, that works, sorry. Elden Elementary School, Noah Demarest, Liam Henderson, Claire Lashome, Jamir McKenzie, Kamari McKenzie, Peyton Richardson, Ivan Stitzjaskuk, Belucci Udekwe, Mary Walsh, and John Wilson Jr. Okay, next is McNamara Elementary School, we have Eli Beach, Garrett Brodeur, Landon Busby, Kendall Cody, Dylan Cousineau, Jacob Cousineau, Jacob Davis, Flannery Dugan, Levi Frer Dorn, Nathan Farrell, Peter Huffman, Mason King, Jude Langstaff, Charlie Macbeth, Jampa Mastriano, Samuel Mills, Gregory Myers, Jacob Pikarski, Leroy Raynor, Hayden Rellos, Annabelle Ryder, Jordan Sivigni, Davian Shepherd, and Cooper Smith. Where's Cooper Smith? Okay, Palmer Elementary School, we have Griffin Alciver, Brayden Anders, Josie Baker, Kayden Bruce, Tommy Gabriel, Henry Gonzalez, Travis LeBlanc, Devon Smiley, and Eli Wilkerson. Van Buren Elementary School, we have Chase Calfess, Lucas Delgado, Aiden Hess, Carson Kirkendale, Alex Stone, Talon Williamson, and Christopher Zintexico. And last but not least, from Reynolds Elementary School, Robert Armstrong, Antoine Brown, Mark Hanson, Dorian Hazel, Tatum Hill, Matthew Ladue Jr., Cillian Pollack, David Schwalm, Jacob Spencer, Silas Streeter, and Lilian Winship.
So we're gonna just do, if any parents want to take a picture, please feel free, come on up, picture time. Guys, get in tight with my... Okay, so to our student athletes, thank you, thank you, thank you for representing Baldwinville and for doing such a great job at this year's Special Olympics. Thank you so much. One more round of applause. And then certainly, I just, I couldn't go without saying thank you to all the parents. We are blessed, I say this all the time, but thank you for giving us your children for seven, eight hours a day. We are truly blessed, they are amazing, they are what keep us energized and keep us going. Thank you so much, and I wish you all a very happy summer. You don't have to leave yet, because we're gonna recognize a couple more athletes tonight, we're gonna have, next we're gonna have Mr. Campolito come up, we're gonna recognize some additional student athletes that participate in other sports, so you athletes, go have a seat, we're gonna call up some other ones. Next, good job, guys.
Up next, we are going to be honoring our Spring 2019 varsity athletes. Boys Varsity Lacrosse, coached by Matt Wilcox. The boys varsity team is a Section III Class A champion and Class A Regional Champion. The members include Austin Bolton, Ryan Bullier, Adam Davis, Andrew Davis, Ethan Donahue, Christian Fekera, Carter Gates, Colby Hahn, Samuel Ivan, Brayden Lynch, Brayden McCard.
Are they?
They're somewhere.
Oh.
They're in the band room. Don't tell them.
Are the girls here?
Yeah, they should all be here.
We will do this over, this is a rough draft.
Oh, they gotta go the other way. Go the other way. I know, right?
We will start again. Boys Varsity Lacrosse, Coach Matt Wilcox, this year 2019 Class A Section III Champion and Class A Regional Champion. We'll call the student athletes and then give them a round of applause at the end. Members of the team include Austin Bolton, Ryan Bullier, Adam Davis, Andrew Davis, Ethan Donahue, Christian Fekera, Carter Gates, Colby Hahn, Samuel Ivan, Brayden Lynch, Brayden McCard, Gavin O'Connor, Quinn Peters, Garrett Petrelli, Noah Ravis, Logan Sather, Ethan Schwabenbauer, Casey Hawk, Cameron Slink, I'm sorry, Casey Scott, I apologize, Casey Scott, Cameron Slink, Dominic Spisato, Daniel Steely, Connor Steria, Cameron Sweeney, Michael Tangretti, Thomas Thebault, Caleb Voorhees, Joshua Voyer, Andrew Walden, Aiden Walker, Jacob Walsh, Brendan Wilcox, Spencer Wertheim, Matthew Wadka, and Team Manager Malik Awad.
Anybody want to take pictures?
I did also want to mention Coach Lamb is up here as well, so wanted to thank him as well. Up next will be Girls Varsity Lacrosse. Coached by Megan Collins, the Girls Varsity Lacrosse team is a Section III Class A Champion, the Class A Regional Champion, and they're in second place in the state tournament. Members of the team include Sofia Cavalaro, Kiara Curtis, Madeline Chiz, Emily DeJean, Abigail Donahue, Liza Doherty, Emmy Foot, Jaden Frank, Emma Gebhardt, Cassidy Hayward, Hannah Johnson, Sarah Klein, Taylor Metcalf, Hannah Memus, Olivia Muscolino, Tiffany Natoli, Catherine Nice, Bailey Nicholson, Catherine Pascal, Jenna Pastore, Jordan Roy, Sidney Smith, and Emma States. And the coaches, Coach Collins and Coach Witty. Boys Varsity Golf, Coach Andy L. Max Duck competed in the Section III team and the New York State Boys Golf Championships June 1st through the 3rd at the Robert Trent Golf Course at Cornell. Max tied for 34th place out of 99 golfers. Congratulations, Coach, and congratulations, Max. Boys Varsity Tennis, Coach Paul Mestre, Antonio Marcello competed in the singles and the New York State Boys Tennis Championships at the Billie Jean King National Tennis Center in Queens, New York during May 29th through the 3rd. Congratulations, Antonio. If I could have Boys Varsity Track and Girls Varsity Track Coach, Coach Bill Spicer and Coach Mike Skidary come up, we're going to honor the girls and boys outdoor track and field athletes who competed in the state championship in Middletown High School on June 8th, June 7th and 8th. Sam Kellner, who competed in the 400-meter hurdles, placed 19th overall. Justice Holden Betts competed in the 400-meter hurdles in the state championships and finished in 6th place overall. Karen Akiri competed in the 200-meter dash in the state championships and placed 13th overall. Lauren Adario competed in the triple jump in the state championship and finished 13th, 11th place overall. Girls Varsity Crew, could Coach Christopher Ludden please come in? The senior four boat won the state championships which were held in Saratoga this past May. The members of the boat include Sidney Van Aken, Alana Chris, Erin Mordant, Grace Capora, and Hannah Norton.
Okay, so thank you to, oh, I know a lot of people are leaving, I don't blame them, I'm gonna follow you, that's okay. But thank, congratulations to all athletes, I'll tell you, I played sports my whole life, I don't remember being in shape like that and looking like that, I just, I don't know what they're feeding the kids these days, holy mackerel, I thought that was like, what, the New York Giants lacrosse team, holy mackerel. So, and again, to the parents, I always have to thank the parents, because without the parents, none of this would be possible, so thank you to the parents. Next, I'm gonna have Mr. Dent come up, and we're gonna recognize, talk a little bit about SEAL of Biliteracy and what that is, and we're gonna recognize some students who are an all-go group, I think, right? Yeah?
Perfect. Good evening, everybody. The, excuse me, the New York State SEAL of Biliteracy recognizes high school graduates who have attained a high level of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in one or more languages in addition to English. The intent of the SEAL is to encourage the study of languages, identify high school graduates with language and biliteracy skills for employers, provide universities with additional information about applicants seeking admission, and prepare students with 21st century skills. This accomplishment represents a tremendous commitment and dedication to furthering and expanding communication using foreign languages and is a tremendous accomplishment. Prior to this evening, the qualifying seniors have received recognition during Student Recognition Week at Baker High School, where they receive the New York State SEAL of Biliteracy medals. Students will also receive the official SEAL on their diplomas that they will receive at graduation this Sunday. Tonight, the district would like to present the following students with the official New York State SEAL of Biliteracy PIN. Maura Bartel for Spanish, Owen Bauer for Spanish, Elizabeth Mots for Spanish, Cooper Pyle for Spanish. Maura Bartel for Spanish, Owen Bauer for Spanish, Elizabeth Mots for Spanish, Cooper Pyle for German, Mackenzie Randolph for Spanish, Ihem Rodriguez for English, Spanish as a first language, Abigail Scherfling for Spanish, Mitch Stables for German, Jason Steiger for Spanish, and Stephanie Strup for German. This is a tremendous accomplishment. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job, Jason. That's awesome. I'll do that. Jason, are you a senior? I'll do that Sunday for you. When we call you now, make sure we do a little, is that all right with you guys? Do a little shout-out? All right. Congratulations, guys. Awesome job, our inaugural group. That is absolutely amazing. You should be very proud. Great job. About another 45 minutes, if you could just bear with me. No, I'm teasing. Last but certainly not least, I just want to take a minute to recognize a young lady and thank her for giving up her Monday nights for the past year. Ms. Sophie Simone, can you please come up? She has been our student board member this year. And I know she doesn't like this at all, but I have to. I mean, she's absolutely amazing. She has been an amazing participant of this Board of Education, bringing what we do every single day. It's very easy to sometimes get lost in the weeds a little bit and forget about why we do this job. This is the one who brought it back to reality and made it real for us and saying, well, this is what the kids want, this is what I'm seeing, this is what I'm hearing. And I can't thank you enough. I wish you the best of luck next year and make sure, please, come back and see us and tell us what's working, what's not working, what do we have to do to get better. All right, so this is for you. Thank you so much.
So, on behalf of the board, Sophie, I'd also like to thank you. And just a little note that in Sophie's spare time, she found the ability to become valedictorian of the senior class. So, congratulations. Good luck at Villanova. Well, unfortunately, I guess we have to go to the business section of the meeting at this point. So, anyone that would like to go ahead and spend their evening elsewhere, you're more than welcome to. We do appreciate your time that you spent with us this evening, though. And again, congratulations to all those students and thank you to the parents that supported them all along the way. So, thank you. So, if I'm in the right place, we're Correspondence Board Activities, is that where we are, guys? Okay. June 5th, policy meeting. Report.
I think it looks like Jen and I are going to tag-team this. Actually, at the Policy Committee, we went over a number of things that we've already reviewed. I think most of them are on for first reading tonight. We also decided to scale back how aggressive we were in terms of reviewing things, and I think we're going to be looking at that for the next year. But overall, I think it went well. Jen, I'm sure you have something to add.
Couldn't have said it better than myself. No, the minor, you'll just see minor corrections on the policies for tonight, and yeah, we want to slow some things down. We're getting to more of the media policies that are more of a local discretion, and as you'll see tonight also, we're sending one back to the district. We're going to approve it tonight, hopefully, but we're going to send it back to get some feedback by the district staff.
Moving on then to the MOOC DWI event. I understand that went very well.
I was able to attend and I was able to talk to a few of the first responders that were there, and they're very dedicated and devote their time to coming in on their own time and putting on a really powerful example of what could happen, and I hope it was, it sounds like things turned out well, so I hope that's part of that reason. So, another, commend all them and make sure, Matt, you pass on our thanks to all those first responders.
Thank you. Then, last Monday, we had a team review that I think went pretty well. Any particular comments from that? Okay, moving on. June 11th, Diversity Committee meeting.
I'll speak to that. So, something new the district is moving forward with is a diversity committee. I don't know that that's going to be the title of the committee. That's where we're starting. And we have, we're going to consult with a gentleman by the name of Derek Dorsey from Syracuse City. He's actually, I believe, the board president for Syracuse City Schools, and he's going to help guide us on looking at diversity as it relates to the 13 protected classes, race, disability, sexual orientation, everything. And we have about 30 people on the committee, that's students, teachers, administrators, all constituents are on that committee. So, we just really did a meet and greet. The work is really going to start in the fall, so I will probably be looking, I'm kind of working with Derek and Dave Kilkors are overseeing that committee, so I'm going to be working with them to see what is the plan. I have a feeling they want to work as a group of employees, parents, and students and bring and present something to the board before the holidays and then ask for board, does anybody want to serve on it? I'm not sure. I want to see what direction they're going in. I want to kind of see what, I want them to tell me how it's going to work. So, more to come there, but I'm very excited about this new committee.
Okay, thank you. And so, there was an open dialogue session on the 13th. I assume that had good participation?
Yep, excellent. Was that visited McNamara? Excellent participation, very positive, very excited. Jen's over there, very excited to have Jen there and looking forward to some new things in the horizon for McNamara. So, it was a very good visit.
Okay, and then before this meeting tonight, we did have an audit committee. Anybody want to talk about that?
Actually, as part of the board agenda for tonight, you'll actually see a fund balance management plan that Jamie had put together. It's fascinating reading. Okay, that was a bad joke. Anyway, no, it was very helpful in terms of how we as a district plan for future expenses, and I think it was very helpful. And then there was an overview of where we anticipate our fund balance to be at the end of this year, so, and that's also attached.
Okay, thank you. Any other meetings, events over the last week or two?
Yeah, the, over here. That's all right. I had two events that I want to acknowledge. I know several of us were at the signing day last week for some of our students who were, have made a decision to serve in the armed forces. I'd also like to acknowledge that that was the idea and it was implemented by one of our very own students as well, so that's a huge deal, I think. The other thing that I attended that was good, I've attended it for a couple of years, was Eldon's Flag Day Celebration, and they always do a great job with that, so.
Thank you. Anything else at this time? Well, we'll move on then to Student Board Report.
So, I mean, I guess the biggest thing is today for Baker was the last day of school. I think everyone was kind of, it was like sad, but it was exciting. I think most people hasn't really registered yet, that they're not like getting up and going back tomorrow, but it will. I'm ready for graduation, probably going to like cry, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I think, so, the biggest thing that happened since the last meeting was ball and KBR, and everyone I talked to had a lot of fun at ball, but most people I talked to had a lot more fun at KBR, which I was actually surprised to hear, but I agree, like KBR was a lot of fun. I don't think I've ever stayed up until 2:30 in my life, but I did, and it was a lot of fun. Everyone really got to like, you kind of like hang out with people you don't usually hang out with and just get to talk to everyone, and it was a really good way, I think, to like end senior year and get to spend time with everyone. Other than that, we had, I know I've talked a few times about like the video announcements that we're starting to do. We had an interest meeting, a couple, like in the, I think, last week, and over 45 kids showed up, so they actually have to like cut people. They're holding auditions for like who's like the best news acre and stuff like that, which is actually really good to see that that program's going to be expanding a lot next year, especially with the new like green room that they're going to have, and so that's exciting that that will be expanding. And then on Wednesday, we had our last student council meeting and we gave the exchange students, Joe and Jan, we gave them like gifts, thanking them for coming to our school and kind of like sending them off. That was really nice. And then the other thing coming up is a lot of kids are really excited about like the senior walk, going back to their elementary schools and being able to like see their old teachers and stuff, so everyone's really excited about that, yeah.
Thank you, Sophie. That was good. You know, I think it's wonderful that KBR has kept going, and I'm trying to remember, maybe 10 years, eight years ago, people started that up, and that's really got a foundation now, but what a great event, and I'm just so happy that parents and students have continued to support that. That's great. But thank you very much and thank you again for your participation. Looks like requests to speak. Jamie?
Yes, sir. We have three requests to speak. First is Ms. Rebecca McLean wants to talk about the new Baker schedule.
Hi, good evening. I am here today to speak about the changes to the Baker schedule. As a parent, I was not contacted about changes to the schedule, so my understanding may not be 100% correct. In January, my daughter selected classes for the 2019-20 academic year. She is part of the class that had chemistry, physics, probability, and statistics negatively impacted in her 7th grade year. She has taken all of the recommended courses and to all extents, she's accelerated. And she is now entering her 11th grade year in September. Last Tuesday, my daughter was called down to her guidance counselor. She was told that she would have to drop one of her electives, and she lost a class that she was really looking forward to, and it was about music composition. It's my understanding that she no longer has to take any science or math requirements nor language, so, but she was asked, she was counseled into dropping the elective that she really wanted to take. I know other students are more negatively impacted than my daughter. Some are being asked to choose between language and orchestra. I hear that these changes are connected to the cafeteria renovations as well as new mandates. I know parents would feel more comfortable with changes if parents received communication about these changes. I'm disappointed that as a parent, I was not made aware of the schedule changes or more importantly, the reason for these changes. Many parents are upset and unsure of how to register their concerns. In a district that is helping all students reach their full potential, I have to say that I feel that the district could not have exhausted every possibility regarding this issue. I would like to encourage the Baker administration and guidance to keep looking for alternatives that do not limit students' opportunities and allow the students the ability to maintain their original schedules. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second speaker this evening is Alessa Smith. She wants to talk about the new Baker schedule as well.
Hello, it's been a while since I've been here. The last time I came was at a time that we were going through great changes for the current rising junior class. That was the class that they switched everything around and were looking to accelerate. We as parents were brought in and watched videos of 8th graders with their hands on their head, you know, just bored and look, and we were told, now's the time to press on, now's the time to offer them accelerated coursework. Like, we were going for 85% or more to go up. So, this particular rising class were our guinea pigs, and this particular rising class was told that by doing the maths and the sciences and all the accelerated region stuff early, meaning 8th, 9th, 10th grade, that there was going to be a plethora of electives and choices and wow, we were, things were just going to blow up. And you know what? Things have. There's a ton of stuff, and they really have done that. But again, like Mrs. McLean said, we got to our guidance council meeting this year, and here we are. We are having to choose between orchestra and Latin, or, you know, we've made music honors, we're participating in chamber, which is wonderful. She has gone this entire year, and she'll speak to this herself, but she's gone this entire year with no lunch and no study halls, all accelerated, all honors. Heck, she's her Section 3 pole vault winner and performing in every musical and thing you have. So, we're jumping at it, but what's happening now, mandate, the way the new schedule went down, she has to have a lunch. The way the schedule went down, she's got to make choices and eliminate things, not add those things in. And as a person who works in other school districts and looks at schedules and knows about the state mandate to elongate and all of that, and who's been there and seen block scheduling versus 12 classes a day, I'm just wondering, how do we come up with this one? Where did we get there? And like them, why was there no communication? It's just discouraging, so. I would say, can we look back at it? Can we do something?
Okay, next is Ms. Ellis Smith, who wants to talk about the Baker schedule as well.
I'm not the only student being affected by this, and now the way with the new schedules designed, that students have to take a lunch, they can't take three electives, and incoming 10th graders, they're still required to take a language and their last science course. They can't take the music theory along with a musical instrument and chorus, so it's nearly impossible to do, or aim towards a music career because they have finished their last year of science and language. And it would be possible if they had the lunch period to opt out of, but because they're required to have 30 minutes in their day to not take a class and limit their instruction time, then it's impossible for that.
Thank you. And that's it, Jamie?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, we do appreciate hearing from the public, and as I think everyone knows, you will be contacted later with some explanations, but we don't have a question-to-answer here. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. Matt, Jim, questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Now to reports, and first on the agenda is the leadership report. Matt?
Yes. Tonight, we are going to start with our school counselors. Joe, did you want to start us off with that and while the presenters?
So, a couple counselors. We have representatives from Durkey here, Dave Kilkors, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Carrie Lamachia, who will be taking over overseeing this department, presenting this evening, Brandy Dixon from Baker High School, and Kristen Foot. And the purpose of this quick board report is to highlight the changes with our school counseling, our guidance plan as required by state that goes into effect on July 1st. They will talk a little They will talk a little bit about the, the changes and then, and why we need to make some changes. And then, our goal as a, as a leadership team is to bring the counselors back over the course of next school year to see how the plan is being implemented, talk about the data that they collect based on the plan as we move forward. So expect at least some point, whether that be in the fall or the spring, an update from the counselors. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave, who will again introduce Brandy and Kristen.
Is it on now? I always mess this up, I'm not good with this thing. So I'll turn it over to these guys very quickly. I just wanted to take a moment just to introduce the counselors and just kind of paint the picture that over the last few years, the state has kind of come out with some regulations and some changes like they do with everything, that has put some constraints and, and asked the, the counseling department to really change some of the, the things we do, as well as just look at the district as a whole, K-12, and what our counseling department can do to support all students across the board. So luckily for us, we're a district that has already kind of, you know, taken the bull by the horns over the years and implemented a lot of good things for counseling for students, not just academically, but also with the social, emotional supports that we've implemented. But I'd just like to take a minute before I turn it over and just thank the counselors for all the work that they've done to put into this plan, because, you know, it's, you know, taking on a, a kind of a new thing here to look at and really try to figure out, you know, what we're already doing as a district, and what are some things we need to tweak or add. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you to these guys and turn it over and have them really explain.
I was gonna do introductions, but since Dave did. I just really want to also thank, we had Megan Eshman and Meredith Riggs, two social workers who really were key in helping us implement the elementary piece. We've al- always had a counseling plan at the secondary level, but they were really keen on helping us implement the elementary piece. So Kristen is just gonna touch base. I know we sent this little thing with some of the key changes, and Kristen's just gonna touch base on some of the key changes that are, are going into effect.
So I think you all got in your packet, the chart that's up here. And again, this is based on our guidance plan that we, our counseling plan that we created is based on some changes that, that came up in September of 2017. So if you look at this chart, I'm just gonna try to kind of outline what the new requirements are and the old requirements. So in the old requirements, each school district had to just have a, what they called a guidance program for all students. And the new requirements, beginning with the two, 2019-2020 school year, each school shall have a comprehensive developmental school counseling program for all students in grades kindergarten through twelve. And each school district shall also ensure that all students in grades kindergarten through twelve have access to a certified school counselor. And if you look through, in the old requirements, the, in grades K-six, the program would be designed in coordination with teaching staff. And the change now is beginning in the 2019-2020 school year, in grades kindergarten through five, and that's why this is a little different, the counseling program, which includes information on colleges and careers, should be designed by a certified school counselor in coordination with the teaching staff and appropriate pupil personnel service providers. So that was where Meredith and Megan came into, to play with this. In the old regs, in grade seven, twelve, the program included an annual review of each student's educational progress. And really, this could have been done in a small group or individual. And beginning in twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, for students in grades six through twelve, certified school counselors need to provide an annual individual progress review plan, which reflects the student's educational process as well as career intentions. And probably the biggest part of this is, in the past, each school district had to have a plan that kind of served as a guide for the individual program. But beginning in the twenty twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, each school district needs to develop a district-wide and building-level comprehensive developmental school counseling plan, which should be updated annually, available for review at the district offices and in each school building. Is made up, and, and also made available on the school district's website. In addition, and this is probably one of the biggest changes, that each school district shall have established an advisory council made up of representative stakeholders, parents, board members, school building leaders, community-based service providers, teachers, counselors, pupil personnel, social workers, and school psychologists. And this advisory council is gonna meet no less than two times each year, and the purpose is to review the plan, you know, come up with some goals, and, you know, kind of advise the implementation, the implementation of the plan. And again, the annual program outcomes will be recorded to the Board of Education each year. And so that really is, you know, what came down the pipeline from the state. And so we had, really have been working for a couple of years on the, the plan. And, and I think Joe is going to present it tonight, right? Awesome.
The plan is on for approval this evening under new business.
Thank you for the update. I guess we'll, a lot more data to come, it sounds like.
Well, you know, yes. That will come next year after we figure out. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next, why don't we go to our SROs next? You know, they get, they get very tired and cranky, so. Have them come on. So tonight, we're gonna get an update from our SROs. I just wanna, while they're, you guys can come on up. While you're coming up, I'm just gonna paint the picture here. Marty and Mike are used to doing this, they give us their reports and, and their stats from each year. I didn't want to do that with the, with the three new officers, one started mid-year, and we don't know what that looks like. It's very different, well, Ray Middle School's close, but the elementary schools, what does that look like? As far as larcenies and some of the things that, that they deal with, with the older kids. So we are gonna be working at, this summer with our retreat and figure out ways on how to collect data to show if this program's working or not. So really, what I, I asked them to do tonight is really to talk about their first year, first, you know, eight months working, well, for Andrea, it's our first six months working with the kids. I just wanted to really talk more about, what are they doing? What schools are they in? What are they doing with the kids? And just paint the picture for the board on, is this worth it? So with that, why don't we start from our, just so I can do introductions? No, we, we don't have to go in that way, I just want to introduce. So to our left, that's Officer Natali from the Baldinville Police. We all know Officer Nall from Baldinville. Deputy Mike Nord from the Sheriff's Department. Deputy McDonald from the Sheriff's. And then Deputy Kruger from the Sheriff's as well. So I will turn it over to your guy, to you guys.
You just gave Officer Natalia a heart attack, but we voted on, for some reason, I got pointed out first to kick things off, I guess I can talk or something. So again, we always like to take this opportunity, especially since it's quite evident, to support the Board of Education, the District Chaos for Safety and Security, where we went from two officers to five to improve the, the security in the buildings and, and to continue to look for ways to make it safer for our students and staff. Overall, and from my year, it was good to be back. I was a little delayed in getting back, but glad to be back. And actually, it was a pretty good year overall. My stats, I felt, were lower in a lot of areas. Of course, I was minus a couple of months, but still, it was a very good year. Larcenies were down, didn't have a lot of issues with fights. Only significant issue that was evident was the vaping issues. Overall, different things we did, I know the mock DWI was brought up, that went off. No rain out this year, and that went, I thought that went very well. Mike and I did the canine searches. And other than that, just, I'm looking forward as far as, you know, to continue the training for the staff, to look into different ways for the district to improve security and safety in, in the district. And then also looking, I've mentioned to Kevin and stuff, to provide some training for our students, so they have more of a knowledge of how to react to emergency situations, so.
So Dirgy this year was, actually, we had a really good year. It was a little different for me. In years past, I've, you know, been covering Ray and, and some of the elementary schools. And it was definitely an added benefit for me to be more focused at Dirgy, allowing me to spend more time being visible, being around the kids. I know, I have like, basically, it's kind of like a lunch group with the kids. And years past, it's been kind of hard to put that together. It's just an opportunity for kids to kind of have an opportunity to sit with me and eat lunch, and then kind of just talk about things. And, and, you know, some of them might have some interest in law enforcement, but kind of help them, you know, stay on the, the straight path and just kind of guide them along. So I had more of an opportunity for that this year. And, and certainly, just being able to just be there and be around the kids was an added thing. The stats this year were actually down. I know Officer Nall mentioned the vaping. We had some of those issues also at Dirgy this year. I know that we're looking into some plans to kind of, of help alleviate that. But for the most part, the numbers were down. And we did have the canine searches, we did Baker, Dirgy, and Ray. And again, it was a, it was a training opportunity for the canines again. So they certainly enjoyed the opportunity to come and, and, and help us out. And obviously, for security reasons, it was definitely an added benefit for us. So other than that, it was, it was a good year. And looking forward to getting off to a good start next year. So I'm gonna hand it over to Deputy McDonald at Ray.
Hello. This year is my first year in the district. I just want to say thank you, it's been a pleasure so far. I don't have stats to compare to last year as far as what's up, what's down. The year seemed to start off with a lot of fights and some incidences, but I think things have calmed down quite a bit over at Ray. We did a lot of different things with the, the kids this year. And like Mike said, we had the canine search. I had the District Attorney's Office come out to the school and do a risk assessment presentation, which was for all of our sixth graders regarding internet safety and how to keep themselves safe, what not to do. All your messages, everything is recorded forever. We're gonna try to implement that every year with the sixth grade class. So next year, our seventh graders will have already had it, the sixth graders will, will get it. And I think that will help with some of the, any of the social media problems that we've, we've seen earlier on in the school year. Tuesdays, Thursdays, some Wednesdays, I, I try to stay after with some of the kids. We play some intramural type soccer, some basketball. There's a couple of videos on my phone, if you want to see them after of me actually falling down and just complete random. It's just crazy, we should get it onto major networks or something, I'd be famous. The kids love it, we have a great time. A lot of kids in, day in and day out for students, just, just hanging out in the office. Always doing something with the kids throughout the school. I think I've done more steps this year than I've done in the last ten. I accepted a beautiful bracelet today from one of my students. So things are, I mean, the kids, the kids really seem to enjoy it. And I, I've heard good things from students, from parents, that just really feel comfortable having the police presence in the school, especially with some of the, the news. And, and obviously, we made the news today for an incident. And again, I think it was just comforting to have somebody right there, right at the, at the minute to, to handle that, so. And here's Katie.
Hello. As most of you know, we started out the school year in October when we came in, and I had all five elementary schools, so that was a huge undertaking. And, and thank goodness, you guys saw that there was a need to add another person. And luckily, Andrea was able to come in, and she took over two of the schools. But since that time, I think for me, my core goal has been to get the kids used to seeing us in the hallway, to not be scared of us and just build those relationships, so that there's a level of trust and so the kids aren't afraid to come up to me, or later on, when they go on to Ray or Dirgy and Baker, they are comfortable going to one of my other officers if they have a problem or a concern, whether it's something happening at school or at home. Because obviously, we have a lot of the issues that come into our schools that aren't necessarily school issues, but are things that we can sometimes help with. I know initially, before Andrea came on board, I was getting pulled left and right. I think I tallied it up today, and I have over thirty times when I was at one particular school and another school needed me to leave and come there to help, help them either mitigate something or just come and handle something or assist in something. So thirty times is a lot, especially when you're trying to build those relationships. That has gotten better, but certainly, when you're covering more than one school, it's, it's, it's a necessary evil. You have to be ready to leave and, and bounce and be pretty flexible, which, you know, I've tried to do. As far as building the relationships, I can say now, the kids are definitely used to. Every once in a while, I'll still get one that are looking at me and wondering why I'm there. But that's very infrequently. I let, most of the kids know me by name now. I've gone to a lot of after-school or evening activities that the schools are putting on, just to go and volunteer. I was at the five K the other day, a last, a week or so ago, just helping out on the track. I go to family fun nights, I go to PARP reading events, just to see what the kids are involved in. I think they get used to seeing me, not just as a police officer, but a member of our Baldinville community. A lot of them are surprised to know that I have a senior graduating, so they'll be seeing me in tears on Friday when my son does his walkthrough. But I think that's a, a huge piece to let them know that we are not just there for an official role, we, we have compassion. We are there as, you know, parents and members of the community that, that want to give back. I think that was it. Off the top of my head, I think that was it.
So I wasn't here last year, I just started this January, so I don't have stats to compare. For me, it's just been working with our social worker and psychologist to gain relationships with the students and work hand-in-hand with them, see what works for the students, see what doesn't, get me involved as showing a positive role, somebody that they can come and talk to, not be afraid of, like Katie was saying. You know, doing the PARP night, being at the Van Buren Carnival, dancing with the kids, reading to them, you know, being at the family fun night, just being out there and present with the kids and talking. And I take them on breaks, on their five-minute breaks throughout the school day, keep them, keep them going. So my role this year has just been a lot of building the relationship with these younger kids to understand that they can come to any of us and understand what we're actually there for, and to keep them safe.
Okay, so just before we get to questions, so remember when we, when we had Marty and Mike, you know, I kept preaching about, I hate saying like, we need more police officers, I just didn't like that. I, you know, I like to say more counselors, you know? And it was never about like trying to get a police officer. It was about the person. And if you remember, I knew the people I wanted to come here in Baldinville. And we, we killed it, because these guys are seriously another set of counselors. I mean, when they have to get into police mode, I'm sure that happens. But for the most part, they're with the kids. I mean, they, they all, this, when I go there, have lunch groups, they're counseling kids, they're sitting there on the floor with the kids, they're rolling around. I mean, they are developing relationships, and that's truly what we want. We want them to feel safe and develop those relationships. So, you know, again, it's not about, you know, the uniform, it's about the people that they are. And I will tell you, they are, we are blessed, because they are really doing a great job. This coming year, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and not, not their fault by any means. I think it was a lack of guidance on our part. Dave Kilkors will oversee this department next year, so we'll have like cabinet meetings. I mean, we met once bi-weekly. We need a little more touchtime as we develop this program. So now that they're kind of in there and they see how things are going, and now it's a matter of getting together at our weekly meetings. And I have Dave Kilkors, who will, you know, represent the district and work with these guys. And we'll come up with a better plan, okay, how, what, what's working? What school should we house out of? What should we, you know, and I'm kind of gonna lean on them to kind of guide us. But it was just about really finding the right people, and, and they're doing a great job. So I'll open it up, is it, do we have any questions specifically?
Not, not necessarily a question, just a comment, a couple of comments, actually. I talked last time about, you know, the, I noted the counseling sessions in, in your reports, and how what you do, and we appreciate this, is teaching the kids, teaching them how to make good decisions and those types of things. It's not just about going in and, and being a police officer, it's being an educator. And, and that's really the value in what you guys do. The other thing I noted in this report was the amount of time that you spent working with staff, and how you've integrated and, and become part of the staff, and, and really work in tandem. And, and that's another piece that's invaluable, you know, to, to be able to be a part of the team. And, and I appreciate that.
I just wanted to say thank you. I actually whispered to Matt, and I said, you need to take a picture, and he said, why? And he said, "Why?" And I said, "Because that is a really impressive group of people sitting right there, probably the warmest, fuzziest, uniformed people I've seen in a long time." And that's exactly what we need for not only our kids, but our teachers as well. I know in talking to some different people and some personal experience, you've been incredibly helpful and I think people really appreciate it and I think it's just great. So, thank you.
I did have a question for you. Like my colleagues, I noticed that most of your time is involved in counseling and developing relationships, which is wonderful. It's exactly what we wanted. And your, you said your incidents are down and yet we're hearing more and more about students in the classroom who are punching teachers, throwing chairs and desks around, you know, putting, laying hands on each other. And it seems to be a change in our district. And so I'm trying to reconcile that with the number of relationships you're developing and the counseling sessions that you're doing. And I can't, I can't figure out, you know, what's going on and what the answer is. And maybe, maybe you don't know yet and maybe this is something you're going to figure out, you know, over the next year, how to approach.
That's an excellent question. And, you know, just, you know, from my experience working with them, there are situations where I don't want, you know, especially the officers and deputies who work with the older kids. So if I, if I know there's drugs in a locker, I don't want them when I, when I do that. I mean, if I need them, because automatically when they do, they have to arrest a kid. They have different rules. They are no longer working for the school district. If a kid comes and puts their hands on one of them, forget it, they're dropping them there in cough state. I mean, so there's certain things that I don't, I, we got to train our staff. So when we train them, we also have to train our people to say, "When do we use them and when don't we?" Because I don't want to ever arrest kids. I mean, it happens, yes, it absolutely happens. But, you know, especially with the younger kids, you know, Katie and I have many conversations about this with the little ones that just, they don't understand, you know, they don't understand how to let their emotions out. But I also can't have them hitting, you know, police officers. And so we're trying to figure out how, when do they get involved versus when don't they? But it's not just them, it's our administrators. We have a lot of new administrators too that like, "All right, when do we use them, when don't we?" And that's some of the work we're going to do this summer with them. But that, that's an excellent question because when I was here as a building administrator, I rarely, I rarely use the SRO for certain situations because I knew how to happen if they got involved. So if they went, I could easily say to Marty, "Oh, you know, come with me, Marty, we got to go look at the locker." He opens up that, you know, that's it. He confiscates, he takes the kids arrested and, you know, and I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't know that, you know, the full length of everything, but I don't want, there's a difference between what they do and what we can do as administrators. So we're trying to find that healthy balance, but you're absolutely right. And that's why I was like, "Okay, so this year, let's try a couple of deans. Let's see if we can get the deans to kind of help out with some of the, you know, the stuff in the classroom." And then, you know, certainly there as, you know, as the last resort. So, again, you know, I'm speaking out of turn here because I know that that is the answer. That's what I've said. I've said that to administrators and to the SROs, but we have to find that healthy balance and we haven't done that yet. So, I don't know if you guys want to add to that or?
Why try to trump you? It was, it was good.
Guess I had a question for Officer McDonald. And I think, welcome to Ray this year. We had lots of challenges at the beginning of the year and I don't need to tell you that, but I think over the year, things got much improved and, you know, partly thanks to you and the administrators over there. And I heard a lot about it from my sixth grader who, I didn't hear any of that stuff two years ago from my daughter. Now they're different people too, but, so commend you on some improvement over there during the year. What, what are you doing proactively for next year? Because, you know, we'll get a new influx of children over there for next year and is there any example of things that you saw didn't quite work well in the beginning of the year that will do something different next year that maybe can avoid some of that? Or just wondering if you had a thought or two on that?
Nothing too much that I saw at the beginning. I missed the first month of September, so I think some of the kids already got set in some ways. I think part of, I think the internet safety thing with the DA's office, we're going to try to do that late September, early October this year. And I think that might help set a better tone. We didn't do that this year until I think it was late May or March or April. I can't remember the date, but we'll try to do that a little bit earlier. And I think like with the after-school activities and stuff too, I'd like to kind of tweak that a little bit better to, I have a lot of repeat kids that want to keep coming each week, so I'd like to expand that and get that more involved, which I think might help. I can think of a couple of examples off the top of my head that they played with me and their behavior throughout the school years improved greatly, schoolwork, everything. So a lot of kids look forward to that and I think hopefully that's something just schoolwide that we can have some more of that. I know there's not much of an intramural after-school program for, for some of us, more so the sixth graders because they seem to be not into the sports as much as the seventh, so just a little bit of that.
Just one other thought on that. Are there plans for perhaps, you know, the officers that are at the elementary schools to meet with you, to kind of give you a little bit of a heads up on, you know, what things are happening with their students or things that, you know, you might be able to look out for or, you know, one of the kids who is particularly close with someone and might need that additional support? Is that something that you guys plan on doing?
Yeah, we've talked about that a little bit. I've had a few opportunities to go to a couple of the elementary schools. Recently, I was at McNamara for a situation. I went and helped Katie out at Reynolds. So just being there a little bit, I've seen a couple of the different students that, you know, "Hey, this one's a fifth grader, you're going to see this one next year." And that and talking with the principals and assistant principals, I think we have a good idea of kind of who's coming in and what to look for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next we're going to do a technology update. Is RJ? Oh, there he is. So we're here, an update in technology from Mr. Delisle.
And once again, I want to start off by thanking the board for the support that you give our students here in terms of providing the technology. I'm in the schools a lot. Everywhere you look, somebody's got a Chromebook out. Most of the time, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But again, thank you and I, you know, I know you've looked over the report, so I'll kind of summarize each of the big bullet numbers so we can move along, but if you have questions, stop me anytime. One of the heavy lifts that we did, and it was over last summer, and I have to give kudos and thank you to Kevin Smith. Kevin Smith works for Bosse's and he's a network technician, but he's here a lot and pretty much single-handedly changed out our entire network backbone. We have dozens of switches in these buildings and he swapped them all out himself and configured them and it was relatively little disruption to the workflow here. So I have to thank Kevin. Make sure, Natalie, make sure you tell him I said that. Okay. So that was, that was the results of our smart bond. It was $1.24 million of that bond that we did the forklift overhaul for the network. And we went from a 10 gig backbone to a 40 gig backbone. And it's state-of-the-art. It's been working really well. Along with that was the upgrade of the wireless. I'm hearing 1% of the amount of complaints that we used to get on the old network. So I think it's really been a benefit to the kids and the staff. We, our department provided a lot of support to the new camera system. That was a challenge. The old cameras went in, you know, onesie twosies over several years and hardly any of them were labeled back at the switch. So we had to do a lot of detective work, figure out which camera was plugged into what switch. But again, Kevin Smith of Bosse's helped us out and John Cireo did a lot of work with that too. We now have our virtual desktop environment up and running and the kids in Project Lead the Way are using it. They're able to pull up the work on any device from anywhere, from home, from a study hall. And that was the goal that we wanted to accomplish for them. So that's up and running. As far as hardware, most of those bullets that you see at hardware and software were part of the lease last year. Replaced a bunch of iPads, fewer PCs than ever. We used to, we used to change out 600 PCs a year. Now we're down to changing up 135. This year, we only have to change out 60. So our number of PCs are dwindling while the number of Chromebooks, as you can see, we're up to 4,906 Chromebooks in the district. And I just am ordering another 1,400 on the lease this summer. So we should be plastered in Chromebooks. If a kid needs a Chromebook, they should be able to find one somewhere in their room or in the next room over. We implemented new virus protection. That's a huge topic right now. There's, there's so many more attacks on school districts, colleges, small government entities. So we're really trying to make sure that the equipment stays safe. We're pretty much all migrated to Windows 10 now, which is the latest version of Windows that's supported and patched. We provided support for computer-based testing. All kids, grades three through eight in Math and ELA took the test on Chromebooks or a computer. Went off fairly well this year. There wasn't too many issues. Bosse's has done a nice job preventing those denial-of-service attacks from getting through to the districts. They've spent a lot of money trying to mitigate that. It was much better this year. CTV testing for the state and the company that runs it, Questar, they've, they've done a lot of better. So I think the kids had a better experience with the, with the computer-based testing this year. I did a little overview of, you know, the number of tickets and actions that we take. It's pretty consistent to where it is most every year. Somewhere between 3,500 and 4,000 tickets get generated. The actions are what we had to do, like, so some tickets you have to go back two or three times on to get it fixed all the way. So that generates an action. And that's about 4,630 hours of tech work generated by those tickets. One of the great things we did this year is we hired a really competent land tech and it's made a huge difference. Tom Liggett came aboard. He was a custodian here at Dergie at night, little gem hidden that we didn't know about until we advertised for a land tech. He's got a vast experience in a whole bunch of different things that are really, it's really helping us out. He's helping out with the new media courses at Baker and Dergie. He's a whiz at any kind of gaming. He can really support that and the kids here at Dergie and Baker are starting a gaming esport. So it was, it was a really good find and we're glad to have them. As far as professional growth, we provide a lot of training around the Google Classroom and the Google Suite of applications. We supported the teachers that were taking on the VDI, the virtual desktop environment, most of the Project Lead the Way teachers. We instituted a bi-weekly cyber awareness email that goes out. You should be getting them too. I've had really good feedback on that. People say, "Hey, thank you, I gave this to my elderly, you know, father because he keeps answering the phone calls and this and that." So that has helped and we're going to continue to do that and beef up more training on internet safety because it's just where we're at these days. One of the things we did in the curriculum area is that the librarians, the department, they developed a K-12 continuum of services and a digital citizenship curriculum, which will be implemented next year in full, K through 12. So every, every year, our students are going to get some sort of internet safety, digital citizenship, official, formal curriculum. We finished our three-year technology plan. It was submitted to the state and accepted. And those are our goals, to provide students with technology options, to increase accessibility and provide training and support. And they dovetail pretty well with the district goals. And I think everything that we did, you know, that I bulleted falls in lines with those, with both the district and the technology plan goals. Whew, there. Happy to take any questions. I know, I just wowed you with so much information. They just...
I got a quick one.
Sure.
Haven't been on the technology committee for a few years now. The calculators they use in like eighth, ninth grade, we've never, that's never come up at any technology committee meetings about like replacement costs and all that. Does that fall under you?
No, that's under Joe's instructional budget.
Ah, okay. Because now that I have a freshman in high school living under my roof, I had to price one out.
Oh, yeah.
They're not cheap.
No, they're not.
But I don't remember us ever talking about that in technology, so that makes sense then if it falls under Joe's area. But what's our replacement strategy on those?
Each building has hundreds that can be loaned out to students. So if there's a student that either, for whatever reason, a lot of students want their own calculator, so they'll convince their parents to purchase one, but it's not required, it's not necessary, we'll make it available for students and they can be loaned out, just like a textbook.
Well, the, the way the message home came was they can't leave the school as far as loaned out, but I was just wondering, like, do we replace those every three to four years like we do with PCs and all that?
Yeah, occasionally. What we've tried to do is actually not even within the instructional budget, it's been using funds that we've received over the years through whether it be Assemblyman Magnerelli, Senator De Francisco we've used to purchase. But I will double-check depending on the building, but technically, we have been signing them out to take home. So I'll check what grade.
Okay, this is going in the ninth, but I...
I'll check with the building.
I'm sure it's more towards Algebra I, whatever grade. I'm sure some take it in eighth and some take it in ninth, but, yeah, the message sent home was that they're not available for checkout to take home. So if you want one at home, buy one, but they're available at school when you need one.
That shouldn't be the case and I'll clarify that with the building. Thank you.
Yeah, they're about the same price as a Chromebook now.
Yeah, that's right.
It's crazy. Okay, thanks.
Thank you again for your support.
Thank you, RJ. Okay, and then our last report tonight is going to be an update from Jamie.
On Capitol. I don't have a handout, but...
Capitol update, yeah.
There's a lot going on in construction, we seem to be living it. So we got the new transportation center that everybody is driven by Brundage and West Century Road and most of the steel's up. It's on time, on budget. We're still going to November, December move in next year. We hope to have power next week. It's only taken us 18 months with National Grid, but it was counting. The Baker High School kitchen, I'm also, just as an aside, I'm going to take Empire State Development, you know, from whom we purchased the land, who still has a managing interest in the Radisson Industrial Park, bringing their representative who was key in getting that land next Wednesday. Tiffany are going to take her. And we're also taking Lynn Tanner, who's the director of the Radisson Homeowners Association, to go see it because both of those groups are neighbors and I kind of want to keep them involved, what it looks like and all that stuff. And when we have an opening, you know, later this year, I'll invite them along with other area politicians. I just, we're going to go see the site again with them. Baker High School kitchen is going to start being demolished on the 26th as soon as kids are out of the building and we'll be without a kitchen until January. So that's going to be interesting. Remember, we had to rebid that because our prices were a little high. And part of that is going to be taking the, we're remodeling a room across from the principal's office to turn into the student radio and TV station. And that's moving along. The HVAC people are in, they've been in there the last couple of weeks. They're going to be in tomorrow trying to not make too much noise during regents. But we have the contractor for, that's going to be doing the kitchen for the asbestos remediation is going to take the floor out in there. So that's going to be fun and I, I have to agree with Sophie. A group of us watched that final video by the students at Baker today and that was really funny. That was really, really well done. I liked their tribute to all the retirees and it was fun to watch. It really shows their creativity. If you're at that level and you've only done 15 of them, it's going to be fun to see what they do with it next year. Safety and security project, we've issued a PO for all the hardware to go on the doors and we hired that through a group co-op purchasing system. So we didn't have to have a GC and these locks are going to be installed by Kelly Brothers, which is a hardware company out of Syracuse. So we're hoping to start that this summer. Just got to get a delivery schedule when the stuff's all going to be, start coming in. Capitol Outlay Project for 1819 at Ray, the new playing surface for the... The new playing surface for the kids adjacent to the parking lot has been finished. They are now putting the dirt around it to get some grass to grow, and they have to stripe it to put on the four-square, those four-four square. It was wonderful, the PTA donated the money to have that additional play area put along with the basketball court, and then we'll move our basketball hoops out there. I know a lot of students use that in the spring and the fall for recreation. I'm glad we're getting them out of the parking lot. Capitol Outlay for 1920 approved by the voters. We were just talking, we've been having trouble with our phone system. If you remember in that thing, we decided we were going to spend the money on the phones. And probably rather than a building project, we're going to go use that money and have a BOSI's lease for three years, and we'll replace, you know, all 700 phones in the district in all, you know, 10-plus buildings, including all the schools sometime this coming year. And then the Funding the Future Committee focus group had their last meeting a week or 10 days ago, and we should see a report from them soon. Sometime this summer, once our new board members are sworn in, we'll have to decide when we're going to have a meeting with the Board Facilities Committee, or perhaps the whole board, to go over that report and to find out how that might affect future building projects. A brief five-minute rundown, that's where we are. Any questions?
Yeah, just one question, as you were talking, I was just thinking about. With the kitchen renovation, you may or may not have, is there any negative impact on the cost for Brian to run the food service? I may not know that off the top of my head, but...
He told us last week at Cabinet that how it's run the third week might look completely different than the first.
Right.
So they're going to do the cold food prep on the second-floor kitchen of the concession stand and bring that over, the salads and all that stuff, and then they're going to do the hot food prep here at Dirgie. And so they're going to be bringing the food over every 15 or 20 minutes so it doesn't get cold. So it's going to be adventure. They modified the menu to still comply with state and federal regulations, but there's going to be slightly fewer choices because they're going to have a difficult time, you know, keeping it warm, the hot food hot and the cold food cold.
I guess we'll just have to keep that in mind when we start looking at the food services budget and if that might be negatively impacted.
Yeah, we'll have to see, we'll have to see how it affects. Luckily, luckily, it's only going to be four of the 10 months.
Yeah.
And by January, he'll be back in the saddle again. So he'll have the final six months. And, you know, he's going to have a snack bar in the main lobby of the high school, you know, right behind the stairs, and then he's going to have two lines, one at either end of the cafeteria. That's why we're going to have four lunch periods because we've got to be able to cycle those kids through there without the kid, the students waiting a long time or the food getting cold or... So it's going to be an adventure. His staff is, they've been doing a lot of planning. He's also been working with the vendors who are moving the old equipment, removing some of the old equipment over to Ray. So he's cycling out some equipment, older equipment in other buildings, going to take the stuff from Baker and move that into those buildings, and he's going to, we'll surplus some later. But the pick, the stuff he's going to pick to choose, part of the contract is that vendor has to refurbish them, and then we'll install them in other schools. So he's been all over it. I know they've been working with the vendors. It's going to be exciting, but it's going to be kind of a nervous four months. Yeah. Okay, I think that completes leadership. So item B on here is first reading of a number of policies. And Joe, any comments on this?
Just really one with regard to a question that came up, the comprehensive student attendance policy. The rate was changed based on meeting with new requirements. It was at 85%. It's now, our practice has been 95%, but it listed the days at 152, and that's an error. 152 is not 95% of the days. So we're actually just going to strike that out for the second reading and not list the number of days because that would be dependent on snow days and number of conference days. So it's just easiest to say 95% and leave it at that, if the board's okay with that.
I just have a question about the process related to the last policy, the student evaluation, promotion, and placement. You're going to bring that back for comment from the experts in the district, which makes a lot of sense. And then what happens from that? So we're going to approve this at some point, or no, we're just going to wait on that one?
So the policy's not changing as it currently is, but what the Policy Committee has asked us to do is to go back, and we're going to bring a group of stakeholders together to look at that policy specifically relating to the areas of grading. That was an area that was part of discussion. For example, science labs, right now, the way the policy is listed, science labs within science courses can only count up to 10% of the overall course grade. And given all of the shifts that we've discussed and the board's experience in the retreats, it's a lot more intense, and there should be a higher weight for those courses. At least, that's what we're hearing from science staff, and that's what, I think administratively, we do agree with. So we'll be taking this policy back to the teachers to look at, and then that committee will be making a recommendation to district administrators, who will then bring it forward to the Policy Committee for review and then the full board. So that might be a good goal, academic goal, for the course of next school year, as you start thinking about that.
I turned it off. I have one question on the foreign exchange student. We limit that to six students?
Typically, we do. We've never run into any issues. The reason for that is because of the fact that, you know, they're obviously taking seats because we have a requirement, when we take on a student, a foreign exchange student, we have an obligation to try to get them certain requirements to meet their country's course of study. And often, at times, that might impact the number of sections that we offer in a specific course, or it might bump those numbers to a point where we have to talk about current student that's in the district and whether they're able to sit for that course. So we do try to limit it. I can't think of a year recently where we've had that many students. But just so you know, the practice has always been, we give first choice and priority to Rotary, the Bollesville Local Rotary Club, and we do not accept any other foreign exchange students from any organization until after the Rotary has first been given an opportunity to have the student enrolled first.
So they, it's referring to students who are here for the full year? Does it need to be, I know Ben brought a group in for a short period of time.
Yeah.
So this doesn't reference any of those programs, or can we...
The short exchanges don't impact this because we don't officially enroll them.
I know they don't impact us really. The question, you know, does the policy kind of get in the way of programs like that, the way it's worded? Or would, do we really not consider them foreign exchange students because they're not here for the full year?
I wouldn't consider them because it's not, it's not a credited, I mean, program.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not, you know, we're not kind of limiting in our opportunity to have programs like that.
Yep.
But based on that, we may want to, I don't know if we want to add language to this in some way that would, you know, talk about whether it's a credit opportunity for those foreign exchange students so that at least our policy would match what we're doing? Or there's some, you know, there's some language that would talk about those other types of programs?
Yeah.
I mean, that might make sense.
Before the, before the next reading, we'll just look specifically under the law to see what the definition of foreign exchange student, that might clarify right there, too. Yep.
So that will be on the agenda next time. Okay, I think we're ready for new business. And the first item, resolve the girls' basketball team, travel and participate in the KSA events at the Disney ESPN Complex in Orlando, Florida from December 19th to the 23rd, 2019 pursuant to the attached. I think I got Matt and Kim. Questions? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item B. Resolve the Board of Education approve the trip request for the Bollesville Central School District Marching Band to travel and participate in the 2020 Turnip of Roses Parade in Pasadena, California, December 28th, 2019 to January 2nd, 2020 pursuant to the attached. Joan? Kim? Questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item C. Textbook request, but I don't have, here we go. Resolve the Board of Education approve the following textbook adoption requests for Baker High School and Ray Middle School students pursuant to the attached. I think I got Jim and Jeff on that one. Questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item D. Resolve the Board of Education appoint Ms. Catherine Hobbs to the position of Central Treasurer effective June 18th, 2019. Kim and Matt? Discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Item E. Resolve the Board of Education approve automotive bid number 380 pursuant to the attached. Joan, Jeff? Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. F. Resolve the Board of Education approve the disposal of surplus instructional material pursuant to the attached. Joan? Oh, boy. Matt? We need a tiebreaker, I guess, don't we? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item G. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the required review and revision of the Bollesville Central School District's professional learning plan pursuant to the attached. Jeff, or Joan, Jeff, excuse me. Discussion? Go ahead.
Questions, I'm sorry. Question one. We've been talking about, you know, the challenges we were discussing earlier in the classroom. Is some of that, I tried to read through the plan, and some of it just generally talked about, you know, behavior management, classroom management kind of stuff. So that's integrated?
Yep. And one of the things I wanted to just comment quickly, we had a professional learning team meeting last week to finalize some dates for work that they're going to be spending during the summer and putting together our program and professional learning opportunities over the course of the next school year, the year after. And some of the areas of focus were trauma-informed best practices, inclusivity, so including all, you know, whether, you know, race, disability, sex, gender, et cetera, and then diversity. So those were the themes that kept emerging, but I'll have more information after they meet in August to finalize really what the plan's going to be for next school year as well as the years moving beyond.
My second question is, some of the people that are often on the front lines with the students who are the most at risk are the teaching assistants and teacher aides. Are they incorporated in this plan, or is there a special, you know, something special that will be done?
Teaching assistants are included in the plan. The makeup of the plan is specific based on regulation, so the majority of the staff, as you see, as you read through that, they are teachers because the plan does require, I believe, I want to say it's like over 50% have to be teachers. But we do have teaching assistants and representatives from Bespa on the committee. And again, I think the administrators that are, you know, working through this plan, the directors are committed to making sure that the teaching assistants have professional development opportunities to meet the needs of our students. So that's kind of been a focus of ours over the last couple of years, and we're looking to go even further because now we have more of an emphasis based on the updates and the regulations.
Joe, we may or may not, I don't remember this, but do we get a report on the, kind of the people that are, the number of people that take opportunities in certain types of the coursework or the learning plans? And just one of the reasons I'm asking is, I was sitting on a plane a few months ago next to, and it was an SU student, that she was working on something, and I stopped and I was watching her, and she's just absolutely flying around the computer and doing things that, switching between things, and it was absolutely amazing to watch. And when RJ was talking, I was thinking a little bit about how are we trying to educate our students and help our students to better prepare themselves for that? You know, do we have a lot of teachers taking advantage of like the curriculum integration training and how to allow them to utilize, you know, these opportunities to incorporate more of the technology into the classroom?
So typically, at the end of the summer, I believe it's scheduled for, if I remember correctly on the board reports, there's a summer curriculum development and professional learning update. I think it's on the September board meeting. So you'll receive a report that will, Tony and Renee will do that, they'll highlight what offerings, again, I know you got a sense of the offerings, but how many staff participated overall and what were some of the key areas. Additionally, two times during the school year, we have approved changes to salary credits for staff. And typically, when we've done that, we've provided an overview of some of the highlights of the specific areas that they're getting professional learning.
Okay, any other discussion there? Ready to vote, then? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And item H. Resolve the Board of Education approve the Bollesville Central School District School Counseling Plan pursuant to the attached. Joan and Jeff? Any discussion? Although we've already had some discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item J. Resolve the Board of Education approve the creation of a new Reserve Entirement Retirement Contribution Reserve Subfund-TRS pursuant to the attached. Matt and Jeff? Hey, this is, we discussed this a little bit. I don't know, Jamie, you want to give us a minute on this?
Yes, this was just allowed in April of this year. The state legislature approved it, and the governor signed it to allow us to have accumulate reserve for TRS. So teachers' retirement, it costs the district a lot of money, and the purpose of using these two reserves, both ERS and TRS, is to, if the, either one of them jumps a lot, we could consider using the reserve to flatten that jump out and not affect the next year or two's general fund budget and keep the taxes lower. And then we'd spend some of the reserve, but then with the idea that, you know, two or three years, the stock market would turn around, they use like a three-year rolling average, and then the rate would start to come down. So that's what schools are doing it for, and we're glad that the state legislature allowed us to do this. We're funding this. If you read the Fund Balance Management Plan with like 1.2 million of our, of some funds. In the going future, we did talk today about the Audit Committee that we pay about 1.6, 1.8 million a year for ERS, and we pay much more than that for TRS, so...
The TRS in the budget, as I recall, is like 4.1 something.
Yes. Yeah. So it's more than double. So we might want to think about moving some more of that money over to the TRS reserve just to kind of get the ratio closer to the reality that we live every year, which is not a bad idea at all. And we can change the balance sheet totals whenever we want. It doesn't have to be done at June 30th or whenever we feel the management. We'll talk some more about that as we go in budget development. I think Tiffany and I have talked about it as we go forward, if we're looking at a long-term management plan about how we'd use those two. This is going to be a very useful tool going forward. Gives us another opportunity to protect instruction and take out some of the slings and arrows of the budget process when we're dealing with the tax gap.
Discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And now I, resolve the Board of Education award the playground excavation contract to Bolins Excavation and Topsoil, Inc. for work at Eldon and McNamara Elementary Schools in the amount of 37,400 pursuant to the attached. Joan, Jeff? Any question, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So that completes the new business and takes us down to roundtable. And I see two items on here right now. Board leadership, number one.
At the last board meeting during roundtable, I brought up that we should probably discuss...
At the last board meeting during roundtable, I brought up that we should probably discuss board leadership and what we're thinking about, if anyone's interested in those positions. This is a conversation that I've never been part of. There really wasn't one last, well, there definitely wasn't one here, but there wasn't really any conversation and we have new people coming on board and this will be their first vote and it would be nice for them to have some background and kind of get a feel for what we're thinking and who's interested in those positions.
Well, I'll start it out, I would be interested in either one of the positions, depending on what the board's wish would be.
I would be interested as well. I don't know, but if anyone wants to talk about like what they, you know, expect or what they see going forward with the board or, you know, the time that they have to put into it. I can tell you that my experience has been a huge learning curve. I definitely don't think that in leadership, time is part of the definition, but I can tell you, being time spent here learning, I've learned a lot from everybody here. I've learned a lot about the challenges, especially some that I've had recently being a board member. But I'm not afraid to get the answers and do the hard work to do that, whether I have to call in help from even outside of our board, whether that's, you know, NISBA, State Ed, you know, I've placed a lot of calls, community vote from government, just to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do, that we're doing things properly. And I think that is part of leadership, is making sure we are doing the best we can for our students and for the community members that elect us into these positions.
So I just have a historical question. I know at the CNY School Board Association dinner, I was talking to a couple of different people and, you know, it was interesting, there are some that talk about, you know, school board president from 2005 to 2011. And then I know, since I've been involved, it really kind of rotates on a regular basis. So is there, is there a rationale for how, why we do what we do or history or something that, you know, as, because obviously there will be a change for this year, so I'm just trying to understand, you know, I guess the rationale for why we do this? If we're doing it on an annual basis, a semi-annual basis, anything like that?
From my experience, it's very individualized among boards and I know what some local boards, same people have been president, vice president for six, seven, eight years. Other boards seem to change every year, two years. So I think it's very individualized and I don't know, once in a while I've heard of a board that has a policy, you know, like no more than two years or something, but I don't know of any best practice for that, so.
I wasn't suggesting anything was a best practice, it was just more of, why do we do the things that we do, so.
I think in the past, I don't think there's anybody who's really, I guess, wanted to be actually in that position for actually more than a couple of years or so at a time. It depends on who's there and who wants to take it on and who, or who they want to keep on doing it. I know when I did it the first five years, it was like I got to that five years to a point and I go in, because I, but I dealt with the Ted Gilkey deal and got a new superintendent and then after that it was like, okay, it's time for somebody else to step up to the plate because that was quite a bit to go through at that time. So it's, it varies. But I, to me, I think in the smaller districts, you're going to see them there for a long period of time.
I kind of like what you said about people who are willing to step up to the plate because, I mean, there's obviously a lot of time, it's more than just, the main job is running the meeting, signing, that there's no special powers or anything, but someone who's willing to put in the time and effort, the research. I think part of leadership is like being like a big information gatherer and getting as much information I personally can put in the time to do that, but I think that's very important for a board to have someone willing to do that so real quality conversations can take place instead of just being receivers of information, actually participating in that if there's information to share, coming from outside as well.
Okay, I guess we'll call for other discussion on this at this time? Okay, the next item I see here is meet the candidate night for 2019, 2020.
That was me as well. This came from looking at the calendar that we will, that's being proposed to be approved at the first meeting. I saw meet the candidates night and I stopped and paused and have thought about, we've gone through three-year cycle of having that and that was something that was brought forward by a community or parent group. And I'm just thinking about, is that something that we as a board see any value in having on there? The first year, I think the community was probably expecting something very different than what happened that year and we had a full room here and I think there's probably, I don't, I can't say this is why people didn't come back the second or third year, but what it ends up being is people just speaking to their bio, which is available and they're not getting any extra information of what meet the candidates night is technically about. So I didn't know whether there's something that we wanted to keep doing anymore since it's obviously the district and board has kind of taken control of that. I mean, we own it and I'm not sure if we're proud or are comfortable with what has been happening the last two years. So I just wanted some thoughts on that since it will be, it's supposed to be on the calendar.
I've actually gotten positive feedback that the people that have attended have enjoyed the opportunity to hear that, so. I've not heard any negative, so I think it's something we instituted that's positive and I think it's well timed before the budget presentation and then it's, you know, very close to the election, so I think it's something we should hang on to and I think it's something that Baldenville can provide.
I did appreciate this year giving the candidates five minutes instead of three, I think was very helpful. Three minutes is pretty short, especially when you're, you know, nervous. To your point, that was just awful. To your point though, Jen, I don't necessarily, I thought it was very helpful. I think we had more people there this year, we obviously had more candidates this year, but it might be something that we want to talk about over the course of the next couple of months if we want to add, you know, whether it's a question and answer session, you know, I would definitely time limit it so that, you know, we're not getting 1,000 questions, but it could be something we could consider.
Yeah, I think more like informed if we choose to, I don't know if we're going to choose to do that or what, I mean, I could go either way. I'm just looking, you know, thinking about who was present in the room. It just seemed like the people who were there, people who were like family members of the people who are running, which is great and the support, but if we're just talking, and, you know, the administrators and stuff are talking to same people who already know us, you know, I don't know if we want to do that. I just wish, you know, you know, we've always said that we wish that there's more community participation, more people engaged, but you also can look at it as if they're not here, then they trust everything that we're doing and, you know, the bios that are out there is plenty for them to make a decision. You know, this year is just different because the messenger has always asked questions and that's really where candidates can get separated and that wasn't out there this year, the, just the pure bio was in the messenger. So really people are voting and they don't even know what we stand for. Like I said, I can go either way, I was just bringing it up because it just seems like the first year was like, wow, this is great, this is something new, the community is excited, but then maybe they didn't get what they thought they were getting and that's why the attendance has been low the last two years. Or there could be other reasons, maybe people are just busy and don't want to, they have other things at night.
Well, I think it's still valuable for, sorry Jim, I didn't see your light on there. I think it's still valuable that we can offer that and, you know, if we went on attendance alone, we could make that case for almost every board meeting we have that they're not important to have. So I would disagree, I think it's good for the community. I mean, people can choose to come or not. I mean, even voting for our, for our budget is a significantly smaller portion than what we have available, so I don't think that, you know, because we can only half fill the room doesn't mean we don't, it's not valuable, even if a couple of people can make it. And, I mean, if there's ways to, like we do with our board meeting, televise it so that, just like a board meeting, plenty of other people see this that aren't here outside of this forum, so if there's something we can do, Jamie or whoever sets up the television stuff, you know, maybe that's a way to include it, but to get rid of it, I think would not be a good tone for, you know, transparency for the district.
I agree, I think it was a very good idea that was brought forward by the group that did it and they were pretty far into the process and they had a different vision for it. And, you know, I'd sit there and wonder, you know, if it was done differently, maybe it would be better attended or people would get more out of it. I'm not saying people don't get anything out of hearing, you know, people's giving their bio, but I guess I'm always looking for media and more things to make decisions on available, you know, to the community. But I think the idea was definitely a good one a couple of years ago and, you know, I've done some research into seeing how different schools do it and usually it's a question answer and we just don't have that, so to Kim's point, you know, maybe adding something to it if we choose to, but if not, I'm fine either way. I just saw it on the calendar and said, are we, are we good with the way it's going or are we not and wanted to discuss it.
Jim?
I agree totally with Jeff. We don't always have great attendance at these different avenues of communication. Coffee and conversation is usually poorly attended, but the people who come often gain valuable knowledge at them. Not a lot of people come to these either. Few citizens, some coaches, administrators and so on, and board members, but at least it's available. So if anybody has a question, they can come, meet the candidates. I know my wife enjoyed it. I think it's important to keep these avenues of communication open so you can have that openness, that transparency the community wants, to have these available even if they don't come to them. So like Kim said, I wouldn't mind a question and answer session of a few minutes for each candidate, but I think it's important to keep these.
And actually the way you said that, I absolutely agree. Just the fact that it's there for people to have that option if they choose to is a good thing.
Okay, any other discussion there?
Well, I just want to add that I do think we need to take a look before we approve at the organizational meeting at the calendar again.
Yes, I was wondering if the board will be okay. I'm going to go over that tomorrow morning, so I know I'm going to see you tomorrow morning. I'd like to do that, finish that, make some changes with Joe and then put it in the Friday letter. There's some conflicts, there's a few different things on there. You're talking about next year's calendar, right? Yes. So if you don't mind. September 16th?
Your first September meeting should be the, it's usually, it's usually like in the middle of September, then you're not starting school and going right into a board meeting, it gives you that time and that usually on the 16th, you end up also giving an enrollment report, enrollment report and a first day report and it gives you more time for that, but it's most always not that first Monday after Labor Day, it's the second Monday after Labor Day. You also don't have the date in there for budget adoption in April, which is April 6th, I believe. So that's not in there. Also, the public hearing and the meet the candidates is always on a Tuesday before the budget vote and it's listed on a Monday on the calendar.
Is it?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, you just, you gotta take another look at that calendar.
All right, we, yeah, I planned on going through, we can go through that tomorrow because I went through it again today, I don't know, I'm missing something.
And there's always in January, you always go the Monday after you come, I mean, you don't go right on that Monday right after break, after Christmas, you go to the second Monday because you're rushed, because we even talked about this before, you're rushed for that meeting as it is. So it's, I mean, there's, there's about four or five dates that are just like.
Try to push them when the weather's cold.
Matt, on that calendar, for example, like to what Joan said, there's, there's no meeting listed for May at all. If, if you're counting the budget hearing and meet the candidates night as a separate meeting, there's nothing listed for May at all that month for a regular board meeting.
So, so, you know, just a suggestion that you. Yeah, but you have it on a Monday, so.
You must be looking at something completely different, Matt.
Yeah, we're looking at two different things.
Because I printed out what you gave us and I agree with.
No, we did put the board, the meet the candidate night, because there are some boards that do have a meet the candidate night on a night that there's a board meeting and with the other, all the events going on, we did select, because it has to be within a certain number of days from the vote, so we did choose in all of the options we gave to have the meet the candidate night on the same night as a board meeting, thinking there would be more attendance and attract more people. But the dates for September, I'm going to have to check because, you know, Lynn put the initial schedule together, I thought that they were consistent to what it was last year.
So, so guess what? It's not going to work about putting it on a Monday because it's always been a Tuesday before the vote, like forever in this district.
That's fine.
So the other people that come there to their budget hearing are, a lot of times the, if you saw there, there were elderly people also coming. They're used to it being on Tuesday. The public hearing's been on Tuesday and then the vote's on a Tuesday, so they gauge the two together.
Sorry, not on a board night?
Not on a board night, not on a Monday, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
That's fine, this was listed as a weekly letter, so that's why we put it out there.
Yeah, I plan to play around with that, one of my to-do things tomorrow morning.
So, for a second I thought I'd been on drugs and I was looking at, I guess, no, it's not me, it's this schedule.
Oh, no, that's me. Okay, we can go through that tomorrow.
So, so we'll get an update and then we'll approve it in July?
We don't do anything with it until the reorg meeting, so we're okay, yeah, so we have time to play with it. So even if I have to do a couple Friday, you know, Friday letters, we have plenty of time.
Okay. Anything else?
I had one question and I don't need an answer today, I just thought for upcoming either board roundtable or a leadership report, if we can get an update on the new vaccination exemption thing that just got approved by the state, how that, how does that impact our district? Do we do anything differently? I mean, it sounded like a big change in the news, but I'm just interested to hear. When you know, you don't, if we don't know something till August or something, then we can wait, but it'd be interesting to hear just because we don't hear much about that and then this sounded like a big change, so what does that mean for Baldenville Central School District?
I can put together a report on those changed requirements for students, vaccination and also some of the changes as it relates to who can opt out of vaccination, so there's no more religious, that's also another. So I can do a whole update, have Julie Carpenter come and help us with that. We'll do one of the summer ones.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, as soon as you know what, all the details and presented out.
Yep, absolutely.
It's not the most urgent thing, but, thanks.
Okay, I did looking at this, have a quick question on budget, Jamie. Under the budget, when you have regular school, that's instructional, I'm guessing?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Regular school is normally 2110.
Yeah. And then, in employee benefits for regular school, you've got for this next year, 25 million 499.
Right.
So that'd be health insurance?
It's going to be health insurance, dental insurance, workers' comp.
Does it include TRS or not?
Yes.
Okay. Because what I was just comparing here is that this coming year, we are, the school will pay, I think, 95% of health insurance for instructional?
Yes.
Okay. And that would amount to roughly $21 million, it looks like here, because if it's essentially 25.5 and I think 4.1, 4.2 is TRS, so it's 21 and change.
Yeah, but you have FICA in there, you have, so you've got 7.65% for social security.
Okay, that goes in here.
All that stuff down into 9,000s.
Okay.
So our budget for health insurance is the same as it is for this year. Because remember, the retirees are still going to pay and now we have people paying the 5%. So in 2018, 19, we're projecting breaking even and we're paying the health insurance cost, so, because this was a year, a good year for us to do it because we had fund balance and the budget budgeted to do that, so. It's, it'll get better as we go along, there'll be a larger and larger reimbursement and then a couple of years from now, we'll, they'll be back at the 10%. And we're okay.
And, and do you have a comparison? Because I, I believe we should be with pay and benefits, we should be in the top tier of schools. Not sure we need to be the very top.
Well, on pay and benefits, as far as the teacher's salary go, that is correct. We're in the top tier in this, in the Otterdike County.
Okay.
We're in probably the middle of the lower tier. We're in the, probably the middle of the lower tier for the support staff, which has been hurting us as far as, uh, hiring leadership positions, head custodians, head cooks, those kind of things. Transportation, we're probably in the middle to upper part. But some of the other, some of the other lower level positions on the support staff side, we're having trouble filling. We've lost some good custodian.
There would be both these data available on, like, what, what we pay can.
And we're part, we're in, in that cohort for this year so we can look at the comparative data.
And can you bring that next time and?
Sure, we can, we can look at that, we can bring it up. We start negotiating, we'll start negotiating with the CSEA, uh, in January.
Okay.
Their contract's up June 30th of 20.
June, June 30th?
June 30th of 20, a year from now.
A year from now, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? I believe then, we are ready, resolve the Board of Education enter to, enter into executive session to discuss a student disciplinary appeal. Matt, Joan? All in favor? Okay, um, this, we're into, well, we'll, this, we're in June and five minutes into exec. Thank you.